I'd like to call the order of the Radiator City Council meeting for August 20th, 2013. Please stand and pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
Elegations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call.
Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Council President Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Grant.
Here.
Counselor Folsom is absent. Counselor Butterfield.
Here.
Counselor Langer.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
On the consent agenda tonight, all we have is the approval of the August 6th, 2013 council meeting minutes.
I'll move consent.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're going to do presentations. The superintendent of schools came last time and she said she had a conflict with another meeting tonight, but that doesn't matter, you've still got the A team up here. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna come down here and we'll call your name one at a time and thank you for doing that and it's a 4-0, I can't believe anybody did that. Phew, that's amazing. So, we'll go ahead and start, we'll be right down there and we'll call names and Tom Pesmer's gonna call the names and hopefully he gets most of them right this time.
Yeah, I'll call something that may resemble your name, hopefully. So, first off, obviously a very impressive amount of students who have achieved a 4.0 GPA for 2012 school year and this, I think, is just further evidence of the great school system that we have and as the mayor said, Heather gave me her apologies as well for not being able to meet, be here, Heather Cordy, the school superintendent. So, these are mostly in alphabetical order, but I noticed that there are a few out of order, so pay attention. Hannah Andarud. Hannah here. I'll kinda read through these and then hopefully I'll notice you standing up as we go through. So, Samantha Abel. Lucas Adams. Cosette Adamson, Adamson, excuse me. Thomas Adamson. Jonah Angus. Olivia Antony. Bradley Bergstrom. Morgan Bowers. Matthew Brooks. Jacob Brooks. Hayden Brundage. Madison Budge. Anthony Berman. I know, where are we at? Alright. Esteban Calderon. Emily Carlson. Connor Karaher. Ryan Chidlaw. Ashley Christensen. Alright. Anna Christensen. Megan Christensen. Kinsley Christensen. Colin Christensen. Are they all related? Patricia Claus. Taylor Cornow. Kellen Croston. Paige Cutberson, Cutberson. Alan Danz. Terri, hey Alan, welcome. Taryn Denny. Jeffrey Dos. Michael Deagle, Deagle. Devon Donahue. Marissa Downing. Guinevere Duncan. Megan Durica. Jacob Eisenbys. Molly Fettig. Gabriella Fisher. Ariel Flat. Emmett Floyd. Gage Fuller. Kimbra Hearn. Catherine Hall. Gabrielle Hall. Dana Grove. Riley Goff. Malia Kirkland. Bryce Keicher. Hunter Keating. Jenica Jordan. Gabrielle Johnson. Hannah Jeans. Mariah Jacobs. Jessica Imbry. Cortland Hutchinson. Courtney Husky. Hannah Huntington. Marie House. Lauren Horner. Kyle Homer. Bailey Holloway. Kristen Hodge. Josiah Ing. Lauren Namder. Taylor Munro. Gabriel Maury. Michaela Milne. Camry Milne. Danielle Missouri. Alright, see if we can go two for two. Daniel McNeely. Morgan McMasters. Megan McCourt. Matthew Mann. Chesney Mallory. Wow, that's two. Caleb Lindgren. Mary Leslie. Is it Mary? Cassandra Lauer. Sarah Codel. Jessica Costa. Richard Schmidt. Adley Rutchman. Kelly Roth. Anna Roth. Avery Rosenbaum. Rachel Robelli. Delaney Riggins. Grant Richmond. Peyton Reuter. Kathleen Resch. Jacob Reimer. Alexis Reed. Keatley Pill. Andrew Peters. Samantha Palladino. Amy Otis. Riley Nielsen. Griffin Weincheck. Arunima Vijay. Emma Vane Court. Hannah Terrison. Kaylee Tapia. Hotan, Howtan. Brian Swihart. Lydia Ing. Kendall Swanson. Talia Stashen. Megan Starling. Derek Snyder. Brian Smith. Taylor Shannon. Madeline Shipinski. Allison Schworm. Brianna Wyant. And Rebecca Young. That was it, but as you can see, a lot of really excelling students in our, in our community, so.
And there's cookies and punch for you out there for the students and let's all give them another round of applause.
One of the big issues on making sure with number five in the nation to live in is our schools and I think we all have something really to be proud of with our students, so I'm very, very happy to do this and hope we get more next year. Next up will be Washington County, we'll be giving comments on the Tualton Sherwood improvements. If you'd like to give comments on this, please fill out a comment form and turn it in and right after the presentation, we'll take the comments.
My name is Russ Canobel, I'm a principal engineer for Washington County and I'm here to talk about our Tualton. Okay. So, I am Russ Canobel, principal engineer for Washington County and overseeing the Washington County's transportation project out here on Tualton Sherwood Road. First of all, I want to thank mayor and council members for the opportunity to come talk to you tonight and congratulations on the Money Magazine ranking of the top five city to live in. I also wanted to thank your staff that have helped out throughout this process. So, let's get into, let's see if I can...
Page down, I think? There you go.
Okay, there we go. Tualton Sherwood Road, as you guys may know, is one of the most congested arterials in Washington County. It has an average of 60,000 vehicles per day. Get that off of there, there you go. It's a critical multi-modal route and one of the few routes connecting Highway 99W to Interstate 5. It is designated by Washington County as a through truck route and it has about 10% of those 60,000 trips a day that are heavy vehicles. This 10% is a, is a pretty large number, it's about two to three times the amount of a typical arterial in Washington County as far as truck traffic on that arterial. Tualton Sherwood Road and Highway 99W intersection has a high rate of collisions. It ranks in the top 5% on ODOT's, or SPIS list, which is their Safety Priority Index System list and is currently ranked number 21 out of 262 high collision intersections in Washington County.
Say that one more time.
The last part?
Yeah.
It's a 20, it's ranked 21. Washington County keeps a list of intersections too that we have struggles with, so it's 21 out of 262.
Thank you.
There's a significant vehicle queuing and queuing is a term, technical term used to basically talk about backup, how far cars are backed up from that intersection. We see vehicle queues extending from the intersection past Baylor Way, which is about 1,500 feet and at times extending all the way out to Olds Place, which is close to 2,700 feet from that intersection. How this project was funded, in 2005, the Washington County Coordinating Committee recommended misstep 3C funding for the design of this project and then again in 2012, the Washington County Coordinating Committee looked at 49 different projects and picked 19. This is one of the 19 picked for funding and for the funding for the construction of this project. Excuse me. Some of the project goals, the project will improve traffic throw, excuse me, traffic flow through the corridor. It's planned to provide dedicated bicycle facilities, improve pedestrian circulation, and address anticipated future capacity needs. Right now, there's kind of a combination of factors out there causing some of the delays and capacity issues. One is the single west, I'll call it westbound lane through 99W. It's basically as you're heading down Tualton Sherwood Road towards Roy Rogers Road, there's just a single lane getting across Highway 99W. There's also a single westbound lane back at Baylor Way and so as you're headed towards Roy Rogers, you're coming down that single lane and then all of a sudden you're forced into two lanes and you have to make a decision which way you're gonna go at that point and a lot of people don't know what that means until you get past the next signal and now all of a sudden you're in maybe the wrong lane, you wanna go left on the 99W, right or straight and so there's some real confusion in there creating some additional capacity issues and, and just basically confusion out there. One of the other issues is the signal spacing, the signals aren't adequately spaced distance-wise, so there's some overlap from one signal to the next signal causing some of that backup. And then there's some short turn lane, turn pockets for cars, you know, there's not enough room for people to store that do wanna take turns. The project team looked at four different options and there's also an additional two options, option 2A and 2B that were looked at after there was some discussion with property owners out there. So, maybe what I'll do is forward here to a map up there. So, on, on this map, option 1 would remove the signal there at the Albertsons and Theater entrance, basically leaving a six lane cross section in there, so there would be two lanes in each direction plus two leftbound turn lanes onto Highway 99W. Option 2 looked at what it would do to leave that signal in place and basically all the signals in place out there. What option 2 did was basically create the need for eight lanes out there, two additional turn lanes and those two additional turn lanes are, would be the left turns into the theater complex. Those would overlap with the left turns onto 99W, creating four turn lanes in that area and then two through lanes in each direction. And so you can imagine, you know, turn lanes are about 14 feet wide each one, so that's about 28 feet of additional rideaway that would be needed from both sides of the road, you know, somehow, so you would be into, potentially be into some of the buildings out there and, and quite a larger rideaway impact. Option 3 looked at removing the signal at Baylor Way. This also created the eight lane cross section because you still had the dual lefts overlapping there at the signal in front of Albertsons. It, it also kind of affected the investment the city's made in the collector there with Baylor Way and the connection to the arterial there. And then option 4 was a look at, hey, let's, let's see what it would do to remove both signals, Baylor and the one in front of Albertsons and put another one kind of in the middle there, right across from, or right next to Bank of America, across from Burger King. And as you can imagine, that also creates quite a rideaway impact, you know, you're into the Burger King likely, you're into some other buildings out there. And, and that particular option had very little public support, if any. So, the public involvement process, I wanted to explain a little. Basically, you know, the county used a range of public involvement activities to educate and also involve the public. We had open house, we sent notices to property owners, we posted newspaper ads, we invited the Sherwood Town Center Advisory Committee and the Steering Committee. We also briefed them at two separate meetings that they had back in June of last year and August, or I should say September of last year. Washington County released media releases, we had 44 people attend that first open house there. And then we created a website that would allow the public access to project status, opportunities for public involvement, meeting materials, and then we're in the process of scheduling a second open house this fall. Some of the, some of the key themes of that first general public involvement process was look to try to make vehicle travel times better. Some of the comments were reduce traffic lights to maximize capacity, lengthen the traffic light time at 99W for Roy Rogers and Tualton Sherwood Road. Of course, we'd all like to do that, but that kind of is ODOT's control. And then clear up the signings for the lane usage, kinda like what I talked about as you're passing Baylor Way in the single lane, then you get two lanes and then you're not quite sure which lane you need to be in when you get up to the 99W signal. The other kind of standard themes that we see all along is about landscaping and landscaping planners, there were positive comments about more of those, there were negative comments about the ones that are out there, get rid of them. And then a lot of comments about pedestrian bike and transit facilities, pro and cons on both of those sides. In addition to that, we had a specific property owner meetings, we had eight meetings with commercial property owners. That included the Les Schwab, a couple focused meetings with Les Schwab, with the Cinemas, with the Morris property, Jim Morris, and the Langer property. We also met with the Sherwood Market Center, which is the Albertsons property, and the Sherwood Crossroads Center, which is the Safeway anchor and both of those properties are managed by Regency Center. And then we also met with Target and Sherwood Langer Farms LLC. In addition to those meetings, we had four additional meetings with the property owners of the Albertsons complex and the theater complex where we looked at those two extra options under option 2, so we looked at an option 2A and an option 2B. We spent some more time looking at, they had hired a traffic engineer, we looked at some of their traffic analysis, we ran our studies based on their traffic analysis. And then, in addition to that, the county decided to hire a facilitator to help us with the discussions with those two property owners. So, the county hired Jean Lawson and she worked with those property owners, with the city and with the county on individual meetings and then we had three or four combined meetings with the, all those groups together to kinda talk about issues and try to address certain After all of that, the design team recommendation is the option 1, which does remove the signal in front of the theater, it does remove the, or the signal in front of Albertsons. Our studies have revealed that this option does provide several benefits, including achieving traffic operations such as the best access spacing, the best travel time out there. Our studies show that by 2035, if you do nothing versus doing option 1, it's a difference of 15 minutes. Option 1 is gonna save you 15 minutes through this corridor if you, if you move forward with that versus doing nothing over the next 20 years. The least amount of impacts, we talked about, least amount of rideaway impacts with option 1, no building or drive-through impacts with option 1, and very limited parking space impacts throughout there. The lowest construction cost also. And then on top of that, I wanted to point out that, you know, it is very consistent with previous planning frameworks such as the I-599W connector study, Washington County's TSP, the city of Sherwood's TSP, the city's Adams North concept plan, and then also the Sherwood Town Center plan. This is just once again showing that recommended option and, and you can see basically up there you have the dual lefts on the 99W, the two through lanes, it is pretty small, we can get you blown up copies of that if you need, or I think your staff has those too. The signal being removed in front of the Albertsons and then the extension of the five lanes up to, to the, I guess that would be called the, the northwest and then past the Walmart, the future Walmart site to the southeast there. So, next steps, we'll start undertaking final design. We want to continue coordinating with individual property owners. We wanna talk about access to the Sherwood marketplace, access to the Regal Cinemas. We also are seriously considering, if not actually have, added to the plans pedestrian crossing in, to replace that signal that we remove at Albertsons. We understand that there is, you know, a transit, bus stop, some type of park and ride on that side, on the theater side of the street, so there is a need for pedestrians to cross there and so that would be, I don't know if you guys are familiar, the county just put in one on Evergreen up in Hillsborough, it's a fully signalized pedestrian crossing and allows them a fairly safe opportunity to cross the arterial at that location. And then we're also looking at some additional local street type improvements. We're looking at an additional open house this fall and hopefully try to get construction underway in 2014. So, that's all I had, is there any questions or comments?
Thank you for the presentation. Would you mind going back to the map? I think it's only the prior slide here. Okay, so, I think it's clear, but I, I wanna make sure I understand, the primary access to the Regal Cinema parking lot, which involves restaurants and bank and whatnot, would now be the Baylor Way, would become the Baylor Way signal, going behind Les Schwab. That would be the functional way out, anyway.
Yes.
Most, most people in Sherwood would not wanna turn right at the current, at the current intersection leaving, because they'd be heading out of town and they don't live out of town, they live in town.
Yeah.
And so that's, that would become kinda the de facto functional in and out.
Correct. And, and the other, the other access would remain in place, but it would, would, like you said, be right in, right out.
One of the oddities I've always had with, with, with Sherwood traffic is that so many people use the Albertsons parking lot to get to the theater and I always thought that was a huge mistake that someone made a long time ago and I like that, so. And, so my other question is, I'm sure you have, but I wanna, I just wanna hear your thoughts about how, I think everyone knows that when Langer Farms Parkway is completed and goes out by Home Depot, which is well underway right now, that's gonna change a lot.
Correct.
All the people who at least know, know where the roads go, traveling, who wanna go north on 99 will duck off there and, and not wait to get to the intersection all the way at 99. They'll just go down by Home Depot and get out there. And, so, I mean, is it possible that the change there will even be more dramatic than you anticipate and then cause you to rethink some of your assumptions here, or do you feel like you have certainty of how the change, that change is gonna play out?
Yeah, there, there is certainty, you know, we, we took into consideration that throughout our traffic study, you know, and, and there, while there is a lot of people turning right at the 99W signal, the majority of that traffic is continuing either onto Roy Rogers Road or taking a left onto 99W. The, the people that will cut off at Langer Parkway definitely will help in that, that access area and so, you know, that's one of the other strategies the county always looks at is, is trying to get traffic out of these busier intersections with some local street connections and those types of things.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So, I think a lot of folks know that one of the toughest challenges is accommodating Regency Centers there at the Albertson's and then the Juniper Ridge at the theater and the restaurants. And so, I'd like to hear what solutions it is that the county has offered them to accommodate the loss of their left-turn movements.
Yeah, so, maybe I'll forward here to a slide that I had, just in case we wanted to talk about this. And this is what the county's proposing to do right now. We've already had a neighborhood meeting, and we will be coming to staff here with a TSP amendment, which, in the lower part of the slide there, extends Baylor Way, we're calling it Baylor Extension, back to the back of Jim Morris's property there. Jim has an easement across his property for the theater, for that site. And so, that's a potential, that's a potential opportunity for additional access to that site.
And wasn't there also something about allowing some U-turns at 99 and at Baylor also?
Yeah, and so, that's one of the other things we're continuing to look at. The U-turn at Baylor is something we could control and easily do. U-turns at 99W are a little tougher, because we'll have to work with the, you know, with ODOT and some of their concerns with that. But it is something that we'll continue to look at, too.
I had a question, kind of piggybacking on Councilor Langer's. For the development that is in the Albertson's development, and I think also for the Regal Cinema development, you talk about the U-turn, but that's going to be a U-turn before that development. So, is the county making any kind of accommodations for signage issues? Because their signage would be passed, the light that is being created, so that people know this is where you turn for this business complex and before they actually have passed the complex.
Yeah, so, the county's looked at that and talked with your staff. The county has options with our blue signage. The actual onsite signage, the big marquee signage, the county is more than willing to work with the businesses to help facilitate that. But that's ultimately going to be the city's call on what those look like. You guys have some fairly stringent sign codes, as most people do, that maybe precludes some of these larger marquee signs. But we will have that opportunity to work on some signage with them and with city staff.
I guess that's it for now, but we'd like to let the people who want to come up and comment on this.
Sure, and if you want to do that now or at the end, either way, I'll stay.
Oh, we'll do it now.
Okay.
Because we have a fairly lengthy agenda, and that way they can, everybody's not forced to stay, if that's what their issue on. And currently, I only have two requests to speak during this. But those are on other issues.
You want to come together, right?
So, basically, you have four people total, two and two.
Oh, okay. So...
Mr. Garello and Beth, I can't see, I can't read the last name.
Mayor Milton and council members, I'm Phil Garello. I'm here on behalf of Tacfall Properties LLC, the owners of the Sherwood Cinema Centers. With me here is Beth Farady, who is one of the principals there. I just wanted to offer a couple of comments. I've provided you with a letter, a short letter, kind of outlined some of our concerns. I think basically, based upon some of the comments, I think you have a sense of what our concerns are already. Since Russ started out with some statistics, let me start out with a couple myself. Seventy-five percent, roughly seventy-five percent of all of the trips going into our site make a left into that center. So, when that light goes away and left-turn movements are prevented, seventy-five percent of our business is going to go someplace else. The question is, is it all going to go in on a backdoor exit on this extension that the county is talking about? In other words, is that really reasonable commercial access for a center like ours? We're quite certain that it's not, and that's why we've been trying to work so hard with the county on other options. We've actually had two options in front of the county. And before I talk about that, I just want to point out one other thing. I was at the last of the public meetings that the county organized on this project, and I know maybe some of you were at some of the earlier ones. As far as I know, based upon that meeting, there is no public support for option number one. What I've heard is that this is going to be a significant impact on these businesses. We heard that from the Planning Commission last week when we were before them with regard to the town center and the aspect of this project with regard to the town center. So, I want to talk to you about solutions and ask you for your support to continue to push the county to find a better solution than the option that they're talking about, which is this backdoor entrance. The first option we talked about, which Russ, I think, generally referred to but really didn't explain, was to remove one of the left-turn pockets coming into the center, which would create more right-of-way space or more building space on Twelton Sherwood Road that would allow the road to be widened in the westbound direction where the congestion really is in that direction. We've, again, worked with the traffic engineer at Lancaster Engineering throughout the process, and we've got a preliminary design for that. The county doesn't really like that option, but has not really pointed to any adopted standards that would be violated by what we're proposing. It would reduce delay and increase safety, both on that street and at the main intersection. The second option that I just want to briefly talk to you about, I think, is an even more innovative option. That option has three parts to it, and it's kind of explained in my letter. The first is for the county and the city to work together with ODOT to create access onto 99, right-in access only on 99, so that instead of having to make this left-turn movement in, we can get a right-turn movement in off of 99 and not have to put all that traffic through the light. The second aspect is to have better connectivity through the backdoor, which is what the county has been proposing. In other words, we don't oppose that, we just can't exist on that only. And the third component of this, and this is in part to protect other turning movements, is that we would, under that circumstance, agree to a restriction on the left-turn movement into our site. But we would ask that the left-turn movements that go from our site out onto Sherwood Road and from the Albertson's, the left-turn movement in for them, which doesn't really restrict the flow of traffic westbound, that those movements retain, be retained, and therefore that the signal itself be retained, except for the movement left into our site. This continues to protect the pedestrian movements there. I stopped at that location today before I came to city council. I was there for about 20 minutes, and I counted 23 students or children crossing that intersection just at that period of time. That didn't include adults. So, as I'm sure you know better than I, there are a lot of kids that cross that intersection. So, what we really need is your support. We need the county's support to really work on these, find a better option. The option that the county is proposing to us is not acceptable, and we don't want to have to take other measures to protect our interests. We're trying to work collaboratively, but so far, that process has not worked.
I didn't go to law school, so I don't, I have to write my notes down. So, my name's Beth Farady, I'm one of the owners of the Regency. So, I just kind of kept a little, made my notes on my phone, so I apologize if that's... So, I wanted to give a little background on the introduction of, to the county's intent to improve Twelton Sherwood Road back in November. It consisted of four proposed plans, two of which were absurd. They were kind of not even potentially possible with their $12 million budget. Anyway, that being said, additionally, the county's approach to roll out their plan was a kind of a divide-and-conquer deal, where they kept the tenants of the north, the shareholders on the north side of Twelton Sherwood and the south side separate to kind of create this just accept it, this is what we're doing, kind of a deal. So, it was really an awkward thing that made this process, I think, be quite elongated. Anyway, that being said, we've been working really hard to try to be collaborative in this process, and as Russ mentioned, we did hire a mediator to work with the county and us to kind of assist through this. And it just ended up being lots and lots of unproductive meetings, which I know we all just dislike. But, anyway, it's just not that conducive to, I've been to a lot of the city planning meetings pertaining to the new town center that's going to be happening here in Sherwood. And with the county's current plan, what I see that doing is making potentially a vacant shopping center not be really super conducive to what a town center is supposed to be all about. So, and I just wanted to also point out that per your TSP and the land use approval for our site, the light was a requirement for the development of the property. And I know that the TSP can be, there's the city TSP and the county TSP, but currently the city's TSP is to remove Baylor, but the county's is to remove the one at Regency and Regal. And it's just kind of, to me, seems to suggest that the county and the city need to work together to come up with, solidifying what's really super pertinent to the community. If the light is removed and the county thinks that that might improve the accident fender benders and traffic and freight and large vehicles access, I just, I hate to look at it this way, but just wait till there's the first death of a child or someone crossing to catch a bus because they can't make it quite down to Baylor or whatever. This is going to really, it's going to put a freeway through your city in another direction. You already have one going one way. It just frightens me for the community and for the people that are running successful businesses of both Regency and Regal. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We don't make comments on these hearings, so we'll just take this all in and we'll comment on it later. Thank you.
Great.
Ty Wyman and Chris Daniel.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Members of the council, thank you so much for your time, for your audience this evening. We do recognize that this is an extraordinary offer to us, but was one that we think is worthwhile. That being said, so, my name is Ty Wyman, and I am, as indicated, attorney for Regency Centers. My address, 851 Southwest Sixth Avenue, Suite 1500, Portland 97204. And Regency, just for the record, owns both Sherwood Crossroads, which is the Safeway-based center, as well as Sherwood Market Center, which has already been referenced here, the Albertson's-based center. Seated at my left is Regency's local property manager, Chris Daniel. Again, we appreciate your time. The time that is going to be devoted to this, however, if I may say, this evening, is not at all what this issue is worth. We are talking about an issue that will define certainly this area of the city for many, many years to come, and my fear is that if this signal is removed, you will spend the next several decades regretting that and trying to get it back for what it's going to do to your would-be town center. In this state, it's hard for me to know how to supplement Mr. Garello's very well-put thoughts. What I would add is, my experience, Phil's experience, is in land use planning, in the law of land use planning. And if there's one thing that this state does, it's land use planning. And there are good reasons for those plans. Those plans project 20 years from now, public infrastructure. They are plans that guide your spending on public infrastructure. They are also plans that guide private entities' investments in property. And both of these properties were developed with the subject traffic signal shown in the city's TSP. The supreme irony, as Beth mentioned, is that the city had the cinema itself install the signal that the county would now remove, effectively killing the cinema's business. And yet, that traffic signal still shows in the city's TSP. Quite candidly, we believe that a decision to remove that city by county or anybody else would be unlawful. How could it be lawful if it still shows in the TSP? Fundamental to our system of land use planning is coordination between plans from the state to the county, to the city. We would rather not test any of this in court. We would rather, as Phil said, that everyone sit down, talk through the options. Frankly, they should be, I believe that those options should be subject to hearing either at this council or at the county board. Again, what are the criteria for removal of the signal? If it shows in the city's transportation system plan, then that means that at some point in time, this very body, the city's council, decided that a signal should be With that, what I'd like to do is stress that the impact is beyond, you've heard the name Albertson's, you've heard Safeway, you've heard the Regal Cinemas. Please know that these centers are filled with folks who are small businesses and trying to run small businesses. And the impact to those people will be utter decimation, and we'd be happy to, in a public hearing, have you hear that firsthand from them. As it is now, I'm going to ask Chris Daniel to describe a little bit more specifically the impact that this decision would have.
Thank you, Ty, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Again, Chris Daniel, property manager for Regency Centers, again, Sherwood Market Center and Sherwood Crossroads across Highway 99 are two properties that we own and operate. You'll have to excuse, I put my thoughts down on paper as well. I would ask that the city reevaluate the county's proposed changes to Southwest Twelton Sherwood Road in light of its impact to businesses and direct contradiction to the proposed town center plan from a pedestrian-friendliness standpoint. It simply doesn't make commercial real estate sense to limit access, let alone the main entrance of a shopping center that is home to 27 businesses. Our Burger King franchisee previously provided a similar example at one of his locations in Las Vegas, where the store immediately dropped 30% in sales and was forced to close shortly thereafter. Cross-shopping is well-known between Sherwood Market Center and the Sherwood Cinema Center. Taking away the pedestrian access will not only result in an inconvenience to customers and citizens of Sherwood, but raise clear safety concerns for those not interested in proceeding to either Highway 99 or Baylor Way to cross. We've tried to work with the county and reach a mutually acceptable solution for well over a year to no avail. We are now asking for the support of the City of Sherwood, a place where we do business, offer important neighborhood services, and pay taxes. Again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, Mayor? Just clarification. Maybe I didn't understand the first presentation, but I thought that they were talking about leaving or at least creating a new form of pedestrian access right at the, right between the two parking lots. And did I misunderstand that? Because you're saying they're talking about taking away any pedestrian crossing at that point. But would you clarify that, what the proposal really is in option one?
That's an excellent question. What is the proposal? What we hear is, we're thinking about, we're thinking about X, we're thinking about Y, we're thinking about Z. What we know is that they want to remove the signal. They don't want to, they don't want to remove the signal in order to enhance pedestrian access across the road. They want to do it to increase the flow of traffic through the city. So, we have had absolutely no assurance provided. Would we get a treatment similar to what you see on Barbara Boulevard, something that includes lights and whatnot? includes lights and whatnot? We have not seen any of that, much less any assurance of it. The only assurance is, the signal is going to come out.
Thank you.
Just two really quick comments. One is, has anybody considered the Walmart traffic getting added to this mess? Because that's going to be significant. So, when you're making your decision, try to remember where the Walmart traffic's going to be coming from, you know, Tiger, Twalton, and Newburgh, and getting there. And I don't know, I haven't heard anything about timing the lights on Twalton Sherwood. ODOT told me about five or six years ago at a meeting that the lights on Twalton Sherwood should be timed in about three years, so that was like two or three years ago, and they're still not timed. So, I don't know if anybody's actually looked into, you know, here about taking lights in, you know, taking lights out, putting them in, but if, you know, I know that, you know, small towns across America can time their lights. I know this is a little more complex of a math problem, but if we can get the lights timed right, instead of getting behind the semi truck that constantly gets the yellow light and then takes him three minutes to get up to speed again, and then it hits another yellow light, that's what's clogging a lot of that traffic there. You know, if we can time these guys and get everybody kind of through without hitting every yellow light, like I'm jinxed, you know, I will hit every yellow light. Yeah, you are jinxed too. I will hit every yellow light, and what should take me, you know, 10 minutes to get to Twalton, you know, can end up taking me 25, and it's not necessarily because of traffic, it's because I'm hitting every single yellow light and having to stop for that. So, I don't know. I would like that to be in the consideration when you guys are thinking about what lights to keep and what lights not to, is that maybe we need to time lights first and see how well it works out. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Stewart.
Eugene Stewart, P.O., Box 534, Sherwood. Couple things on this TSP amendment map, or one of the things is that, I believe it's the Ratzloff property and the Anderson property across Roy Rogers Road from Safeway. With this program, they're proposing to take away the, there'll be no entrance into one of those properties off of Roy Rogers. The suggestion is for them to go down to Twalton Sherwood and then have a proposed road that would finally come back to that property. You're creating an island with no access for them. My understanding also, Anderson property does not, you know, whether they gave it away or what, but they have no access from 99W. So, where are we going to put that road in so the property can be developed? Prime Coroner, how do we approach this? And it almost seems to me, what we're saying, there again, this is just a wild guess, but if 90% of that traffic coming down to Twalton Sherwood is then turning left to go down 99W, do they really want to stop in Sherwood? Do they want to maybe just get around Sherwood? Back in the 80s, when they had the chance to build the 205 extension over, they gave that money away for something else. And so now, we're trying to deal with this, and it's almost as if before you get to six corners, you get them back over to 99W and then send them down 99W instead of this. I've also noticed downtown, there's more traffic that comes through downtown Sherwood now. There again, it doesn't stop for anything, it's just trying to find a way around this mess. And so, how do we really sit down and look at this analytically? Now, Washington County said that 10% of the traffic down Twalton Sherwood is truck traffic, yet at your public hearings for Langer Property, they said only 5%, not Washington County, but the traffic study done there said that there's only 5%. That's a lot of difference. And so, how do we reconcile that? Are we, and it is the only way to get to I-5 from 99W until you get up to the exit entrance at the far end of Taggart. In between, all the streets that go across towards the freeway, they don't allow truck traffic, so that's why there's so much traffic going down there. So, I don't know. It seems like we need to find a better way. We have not come up with a good solution. It's one that maybe fits the pocketbooks of the county right now, but are we going to end up spending twice as much down the road to fix it? It needs to be a fix that works for it. Also, it makes no sense to me to go into Les Schwab, you'll turn left into Les Schwab, drive all the way to the end of their lot, go around the roundabout and come back to park in the parking lot. I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense. Maybe traffic-wise, it does, but for even their customers, it's going to make them think twice maybe about before they go in there, or what happens if you got a truck that comes in. I know Cam said that one solution they was told is flip their building. Well, who's going to pay for that? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noble, could you come back up and maybe address some of these issues?
Yes, so real quickly, the last gentleman on the Les Schwab issue, we have worked closely with CAM and then Les Schwab as a corporation, and they are supportive of the TSP amendment for the Baylor extension. They understand the impact that creates, but they're comfortable with the solution we have out there. Back to some of the other questions, the pedestrian issue I want to address, the county is putting up a signal in replace of the signal that's coming down. It will be a pedestrian-only signal. It will allow pedestrians to trigger that, stop traffic both directions, and be able to safely cross there under a signalized traffic. It will also provide a refuge island in the middle if for some reason, something happens with the signal, or somebody runs a light, or something that they have refuge in the middle as they're crossing that. I would add that the other options that we have looked at create two additional lanes for a pedestrian to try to cross. Leave that signal in place, there's eight lanes out there, pedestrians trying to cross eight lanes of traffic with a signal and side traffic going by them. That's one of the things we also looked at as far as pedestrian treatments. One of the other big issues that has come up numerous times is lack of collaboration, lack of opportunities. I talked about the public involvement process. It was a lot more extensive than we typically do. We had eight meetings initially on with commercial properties out in this area. We realized two of the commercial properties were going to be affected. We had additional meetings with those two commercial properties to find out their concerns. The county typically negotiates with an individual property owner, not two property owners at the same time. That is why we tried to, as they term it, divide and conquer. We said, "We're willing to meet with you on an individual basis to talk about the impacts, the cost, and try to solve this for you." They have insisted of keeping both of them in the room together, so the county has not had the ability to enter into a negotiated settlement with them and talk money, because we cannot do that with two property owners at the same time. We have continued to meet with those two property owners, though, on a general basis of what we could do out in that area to make it work for them. I will say, the Albertsons complex and all those other local businesses that are in there, they have five access points. They are losing one signalized access point, but it will still be a ride-in, ride-out. They have four additional access points into that location. One of the other things that came up is the signal was required as part of the theater development. It was also required that they create a secondary access at Baylor Way. Their traffic study at the time said that 60% of their traffic would go out at the signal in front of them, 40% would go out at Baylor Way. You heard them testify tonight, 75% of their traffic is going out at the signal in front of them. They did not meet their original development agreement to create that easy additional access at Baylor. There still is a way of doing it, but if you've been out there, you know it's quite convoluted. The county's proposing to make that a lot better and to encourage that type of movement along the Baylor extension. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is, oh, one of the other comments was about signal timing. The county has implemented signal, a smart signal system from Teton out to 99, or out, excuse me, out to I-5. We are implementing that same system next year from Teton to 99W. It's a very smart signalized system. It can do what they were asking. As traffic comes to the signal, the signal has a camera, it can readjust each signal cycle. It's not a preset program. It readjust each signal cycle to determine the amount of traffic that's coming through that signal and adjusts the signals ahead so you can make all those signals. Now, I will tell you, when you get to the light at 99W, that is not right now going to be a part of that smart system. We are working with ODOT, though, to try to include their signals throughout Sherwood and tie them to our smart process on Twalton Sherwood Road. If we get there, then all those signals will be able to communicate with each other and make that a better system through there. And then, real quickly on the business issue, there are federal studies out there that talk about changes in access and how they affect businesses. Most of those studies have been done by federal highways, so they could be tainted one way or the other, but those studies do show that there is little to no impact to businesses by the access changes. They have studied it before and after. Secondly, as a local example, if you're familiar with the newer McDonald's that went in off of Twalton Sherwood Road down towards Twalton, in the city of Twalton, that McDonald's, to get to it, you have to take a left at Boone's Ferry, you have to go down Boone's Ferry 1,200 feet, you have to take another left, go 1,000 feet, take another left, come back 1,000 feet to get into that McDonald's. That McDonald's has two drive-throughs. That is the busiest McDonald's in this region, and so, they have found out that traffic will get there. So, that's all the follow-up, unless you guys had some additional questions of follow-up.
Any council comments? You have any questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
We're now going to go into new business.
I put a form in there to talk about this.
I have a form, go ahead. I have the form for ordinance 2013.
Isn't that what we're talking about, the presentation for the Washington County? Well, whatever this is.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
All right, no problem.
I have several different comments. Both of those, first of all, Matt, you should recuse yourself, this is ridiculous. All of this is being caused by your Walmart blah blah that's going on down the road, and you're directly impacting all of these existing businesses that have been here for a long time, plus you're impacting your own businesses. There's no way you should be sitting up there asking questions, trying to get into the process. You would do yourself and everybody a favor if you would recuse yourself. That's number one. Number two, both the county and the city are admitting that you guys are revising these people's existing site plans. You're violating both of their sets of site plans. It's ridiculous. It's the same thing if we would say to that county engineer, I don't know his title, that was just up here, "Let's cut off both your hands, you work with your feet, learn how to do everything with your feet, you're done." Okay? You're telling these people that their orientation and their way that all of us have learned how to use these businesses, you're just systematically cutting it off, and there's not even a process for them. You're violating their site plans, you haven't gone through the process with them. These are things that were granted as part of their agreement to do business with us in this town, and as townspeople, this doesn't make any sense. Whatever you're trying to do tonight needs to be tabled or wait until you get through this whole process, because if you say, as a council, "We're going to let the staff handle this," this is way too sophisticated. You guys are taking away their fundamental driveways and their access points, and you're asking our staff people, many of which have been on-the-job training over the years, they don't have a lot of experience, and you're asking the contract attorneys to make judgments on this. What I think needs to happen is, those people that are primarily impacted, those two great shopping centers with all those little businesses, if you go to any one of those businesses in there, I've talked to several of them, guess what they say? "We'd love to go and talk in front of the city council, but we can't afford it, because we don't want to be victimized." They're little businesses, they can't handle this. I'm glad there's two attorneys here. At least there's going to be some kind of legal representation. You can't fundamentally change our commercial district on the promise, the disaster of Walmart, and not pretend, you know, not even acknowledge that this is the first level of fallout that we're getting from Walmart. And is Walmart in the room saying, "Hey, we're going to be having this great impact, let us pay something?" No. We don't even know if the intergovernmental agreement, who's assigned the litigation here? If these guys turn out litigating against us, the city of Sherwood or the county, almost every single one of these projects we've had, the county or ODOT or whoever you're talking about, Metro, they say usually the litigation, at least in part, falls on the city. You have to look at those dollars. Why can't we make this settlement, in this agreement, they were here first, they have existing rights, they have existing site plans, and you can't violate even our own land use laws, what he's talking about. How do you go in there and just fundamentally change a site plan? They're oriented, there's nothing on the backside, you're going to see the butt end of Act III theaters, the marquee's in the front. Everybody's going to be entering in from behind, and they had, at one point, they had an ODOT access when they first went in there, and that was bargained away or whatever in their original site plan. And for the county engineer to say, "Well, look at their original traffic study," what was that, like 15, 20 years ago? What they're telling us now is the way that it is. That's what we need to look at, and we need to make sure that we're honoring our existing businesses and not just for the sake of current development dollars that are come to the city staff, cobble all of the existing businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. We're making no decisions tonight, this was just merely informational for us, so thank you for everybody who commented. The next new business is Resolution 2013-045, amending the Redflex contract for photo radar light enforcement system. Chief Growth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Jeff Growth, your chief of police, for the record. And what you have before you is Resolution 2013-045. City staff previously identified a need for a contract amendment with our existing vendor, Redflex, and there's really two, you have a staff report in front of you, there's really two changes. Number one, the monthly payments will switch to a flat rate instead of a per paid citation amount, so there's no fluctuation in that amount. It will allow for some consistency, stability for billing and budgeting, and remove some existing burden on staff to rectify the graduating scale and the system that was in place, and it also prevents some costly programming that would need to be done in order for staff to continue to rectify those invoices, and I'll probably get into that a little bit more in a second. But, the second piece that is added are some performance clauses. We have encountered just some, you know, I don't think they're out of the ordinary, but some issues with some of the backend system things that have caused some mistakes and some resets, so we addressed those with Redflex and said, quite frankly, we want a clause in our amendment that protects the city so that if those mistakes happen again, those costs, staff costs and resources aren't carried by us, so we have those clauses in there. You have a copy of the proposed amendment attached to your resolution. So, just by way of background, March 2009, the city council adopted Resolution 2009-23, authorizing the original contract with Redflex, and as I said, because of the authorizing the original contract with Red Flex, and as I said, because of the stuff I talked about, some of the conditions of that contract aren't fitting the needs with the city where we're at. So Craig Gibbons, the former finance director, and I met with Red Flex and worked out this amendment. The amendment has been fully vetted with the city attorney's office, so it's gone through that process. So the new fee will be $3,600 per approach per month, and at five approaches that we have in the city, that'll be $18,000 per month, and that is a flat rate, and that rate is consistent with, and actually just a little bit less than the average of the monthly invoices that we've been receiving from Red Flex. So the city's not going to see any increase in the amount that we're billed. Instead, it's going to be one flat rate that we can plan for and budget for much easier. The way the invoices came in before, they were based on paid citations with numbers 1 through 50 per approach at a certain amount, and then it graduated for the next 50 through 100 and so on and so forth. It was very burdensome every time the invoice came in. Finance department had to go through and try to rectify that, and it just was creating all kinds of additional staff time, and we just realized, for us, that was not the way we were going to be able to continue. Excuse me. The other option that I alluded to earlier was that we could look at a programming fix with our court, current court software, so that the data provided by Red Flex would marry better, if you will, with our court system, which would allow for that, those numbers to be rectified automatically. That was going to be a costly fix, and so rather than spending the money on that, when there's no other issues with our court system, we sought a different pay structure, payment structure. The performance clause, I already talked about, but basically if they make errors or omissions resulting in citations needing to be rescheduled, they're going to pay the city in return for that. So I think that's pretty much it. Rather than me talk some more, I'd love to answer any questions you might have, but staff, including Julie Blums, your interim finance director, and I respectfully request, that's a tough two to put together, that you approve this resolution. Thank you.
Council questions? Council President Henderson.
So the term, is my mic on? The term of the contract is, this new contract with Red Flex is five years?
It's a five-year term, correct.
Okay. And is that standard, five years?
Yeah. Yeah, that's consistent with what we had in the original contract.
Okay. Okay. So now, when the staff receives an invoice, they're not going to have to audit it?
Correct.
And how much time will that save? Just a guess.
It saves me about an hour a month, because I'm the one that has to do it at this point.
Okay.
And I want to point out, the other issue was, there was only a certain percentage that we could rectify, and there were some that we couldn't, that staff couldn't, and so our position has been, if we can't rectify the data in the invoice, then we're not willing to pay that full amount, and so that was causing, obviously causing issues where the full invoices, we didn't want to pay the full invoices, and so that was a whole nother problem that we were able to solve by entering into this amendment. So you have the time, but it just creates a much more convenient system for us in our billing without us incurring any additional cost.
Council Butterfield?
So are we going to have the opportunity, say, two years down the road, if we find out that it's not working, that we can renegotiate this?
Absolutely. We've had that opportunity since day one. We always have the option to say, hey, we need to go back to the table and talk about certain conditions or the entire agreement or whatever, and in fact, that's how we got, this is how we did, this is a perfect example of that opportunity. So we notified our vendor and said, there's a few things that aren't working for us, and we'd like to iron them out, and here we are. So yeah, that opportunity still exists.
Is the revenue that's generated by the Red Flex, does that pay for the fee, this averaging of the fee?
Yes, it more than covers it.
So we'll just go to a flat $18,000 a month, correct?
Correct.
What are we actually getting now per month for the last few months? Could you give us an idea?
Revenue-wise?
Revenue-wise?
Over the last 32 months that we've had the system in place, our total court revenue is about $90,000 a month. That includes both Red Flex and regular citations, so I would estimate probably 75% to 80% of that is Red Flex.
And just so that the citizens listening can understand, where does the excess go?
It goes into the general fund, and it pays for court staff and additional services, that sort of thing, but it stays in the general fund.
Any other council questions?
I'll move, we approve Resolution 2013-045.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our next new business will be Ordinance 2013-005, amending Section 10-08-070 of the municipal code relating to prohibited parking on certain streets. Chief Growth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't introduce myself a second time. So before I get into this, I do want to point out, because I know it's important to you all and it's important to me, we have some residents that have worked with the city quite a bit, as you have as well, Mayor, on this program, and so I just want to publicly thank them for being here, and I won't call them out and embarrass them, but I know this is very important to them, so I appreciate them being there. So again, Ordinance 2013-005, modify Chapter 10 of the Sherwood Municipal Code to create residential parking districts. So as you recall, we had a work session on this on May 7th of 2013, and we've had an ongoing problem in certain neighborhoods, by way of background, in the city being used either as overflow parking areas, alternative parking areas, and/or drop-off points for non-residents and/or non-residential use, and I suppose that, to some extent, some of that happens everywhere, but the neighborhoods in question have seen a tremendous amount of that. This practice has resulted in several issues that affect the livability of the citizens in those neighborhoods, including congestion, the overcrowding of the streets, littering, and, you know, a few other things, but... So your staff has created a residential parking district program using what they felt were the best models from other jurisdictions, so we didn't reinvent the wheel, and what you have before you tonight is very similar to what other jurisdictions have done and are doing. Attached with the ordinance in front of you is Exhibit 1, which contains the new municipal code language, so there was no existing language in the code that was changed. All we did was attach new language onto the end of Chapter 10.08.070. And as you see on the staff report, again, this went through the city attorney's office and was completely vetted. So this ordinance will allow the city council to add additional districts or added parking districts as they identify by resolution. Additionally, staff may identify the need to modify any of the forms or some of the smaller process components if need be. This ordinance, the language in the ordinance, would allow us to be able to do that. Financials, the cost of the signs, each sign costs about $200 installed. The majority of the costs will be offset by residents and/or homeowners associations in the affected neighborhoods. The permits, I don't have a cost of permits for yet, but I can tell you that it's minimal. There'll be simple vinyl window sticker permits and little cardboard or plastic rear-view mirror hanging permits, and that'll be an insignificant cost that can be borne by our existing budget. Staff time, there has been some staff time, because it's a new program, but that's okay, but once the program gets off its feet, it doesn't take much staff time to manage. It'll just be getting the permits where they need to go and then renewing or making whatever changes if somebody sells a house or sells a car. There's not a whole lot to it. So I just want to see if there's anything else need to go over with you by way of attachment, and I do not think so for the ordinance. So again, I'll answer any questions you have, but we respectfully request that city council adopt Ordinance 2013-005, modifying Chapter 10 of the Sherwood Municipal Code to create residential parking districts. Thank you, Mayor.
Council comments?
So this means that you'll need to have staff time, your staff time, patrolling the parking districts, right? And so how's that going to look? I mean, do you have people to go check permits and write parking tickets?
You are correct, but we do that already, so...
Okay.
We're already in the neighborhoods, and it'll just be a matter of looking for the permit, so...
Okay.
It's probably even less than insignificant.
Okay.
It's already something that we're doing, and I can tell you, we're already dealing with this issue.
I see. Oh, yeah, that's true, yeah, I hadn't thought of it that way, yeah, yeah, right.
The one example we talked about in the work session was behind the high school, and so if a parking district gets established there, a couple of the concerns that came up in that meeting were, how would we geographically get it big enough so we didn't just push the problem out, say, a few blocks, so the people out around the edge of that perimeter had a problem? Did that sort of thing ever get talked about anymore, or does that get vetted out in the process when they come request to do their district? Is that when we get into those minor details?
Yeah, I think that's covered more as we add the specific districts and passage, if this ordinance were to pass, it will lead to the next agenda item, which is a resolution to add the first couple districts, but I think the functional answer to that is, we're just going to have to wait and see. We think we've identified the areas that are most prone to parking, and we believe that once we address the issue there, that those other outer areas with, close to the parking district, if that makes sense, are going to be too far, and people aren't going to, just quite frankly, they're not going to park there because it's going to be too far to walk, to school, specific to that one area, and then the other area that will be identified later tonight, if this ordinance passes, same answer, and that is that the area of problem is such a small, specific area, and there's really no place for people to be pushed out because it wouldn't be convenient, and it's, in that neighborhood, has to do with an access point. So there is the potential that there could be other districts around the school that aren't added tonight that will likely be added in the future. We are working with another neighborhood to try to get that process within their neighborhood completed, so we'll just address those as we need to. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah.
So I have a process question for the city attorney. The ordinance in Section 4 is declaring an emergency, but specifically denotes that the ordinance takes effect on August 21st, and that would then allow resolutions to be adopted. The next two items on the agenda are resolutions pertaining to this, so is there an amendment we need to make to the language, or is that acceptable?
Mr. Mayor? All it takes is a finance director. Mr. Mayor, the council can enact the resolutions this evening. The resolutions would not take effect until the ordinance takes effect by operation of law, so if it's more convenient for the council to do that, they have the authority to do that. Thank you for checking, though, it's a good question.
In our work session, I remember that, sorry about that, I should have done that before I turned it higher. In our work session, I remember that the school district attended about this very issue, and they were also talking about additional ideas to help with their congestion issues. Are we going to be working with them as well on kind of problem-solving as we create these districts and compress their students' abilities to park outside?
Yeah, absolutely. We've stayed in contact with the school district. In fact, most of what you have before you tonight, I've shared with the school district so that they can message and get stuff out to their parents with the start of school right around the corner. So they're working on messaging, they've been working with us from the start. You know, they've got a couple of things they're going to do specifically that's within their control at the high school in terms of how many permits, how much, you know, to what level do they want to oversell permits because they know they can get away with that, and so some of that, again, will just need to be determined, but certainly the relationship we have with the school district and specifically with the staff at the high school will allow us to continue to iron out any bugs that we might have and work through that, so I certainly don't have any concerns with that at all.
Any more comments? Call for motion?
I move, we read caption and adopt Ordinance 2013-005.
Ordinance 2013-005, an ordinance amending Section 10.08.070 of the municipal code relating to prohibited parking on certain streets. Counsel Clark?
Aye.
Counsel Langer?
Aye.
Counsel Butterfield?
Aye.
Counsel Folsom is absent. Counselor Grant?
Aye.
Counsel President Henderson?
Aye.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to Resolution 2013-046, establishing two residential parking districts within the city of Sherwood in accordance with Chapter 10 of the municipal code.
Thank you, Mayor. So what we have now is by Resolution 2013-046, are really, I guess, the particulars. So you have a staff report. We just discussed the parking district. What this resolution does is establish the first two parking districts in accordance with the ordinance that just passed. And so, I won't go into the background and all that, but you have exhibits attached to the staff report, and I want to try to go through those so there isn't any confusion. The two patrol, patrol, the two parking districts are entitled Woodhaven Phase 1, and that's because in working with the Woodhaven HOA, they identified a desire to do what they believe are the affected areas in two phases. They've worked tremendously with the city of Sherwood and staff in getting this put together. The HOA is helping to financially support this program so that it can be possible without the city encumbering a huge financial burden. And so Exhibit A-1 to the staff report is the Woodhaven District Fact Sheet. Exhibit A-2 is the Woodhaven District Permit Reply Letter, and so again, that's for Phase 1 in the Woodhaven neighborhood. And then Exhibit B is a permit application, just so you can see what we've put together so far by way of application, and as the ordinance allowed, this can be modified under the direction and authority of the city manager if we find a need to tweak something or whatever. But that is a general permit application for anybody, so it's not specific to a neighborhood. Exhibit C-1 is the SMOCK District Fact Sheet. Exhibit C-2 is the SMOCK District Permit Reply Letter. Now, the reason we have two forms is because the particulars of each district are different. The issues in the Woodhaven area are related to school parking, so that patrol, or, there I go again, that parking district is going to be enforceable, well, let me rephrase that. Parking in that Phase 1 area will only be prohibited on school days between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Outside of those... Outside of those hours, the parking is permitted, right? It's not prohibited. The issues in the SMOCK district, SMOCK is a, the section of SMOCK that we're talking about is a very small neighborhood, if you will, and is maybe eight to 10 houses. I may be off, but it's just a very small portion of SMOCK. And the issues they have there are specifically related to that little Woodhaven Snyder Park access area. And they've had, for years, those folks have put up with significant issues. That is a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day problem. So that district will prohibit unpermitted parking 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because that's the scope and nature of that issue. So that's why you have two different sets of exhibits there. So this resolution comes on the heel of the recently adopted ordinance 2013-005. And as I said in the staff report for the ordinance, and reiterate again, we can tweak any of these forms as the need arises. So with that, staff respectfully requests City Council approval of Resolution 2013-046 to establish two residential parking districts within the city of Sherwood in accordance with Chapter 10 of the municipal code.
Questions from council? Do you have a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution 2013-046.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, the next ordinance we're going to is ordinance 2013-006, assessing sidewalk construction costs on certain lots and parcels in the city and directing the city recorder to enter such assessments in the city's lien docket. Craig Shelton?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm actually going to have David Janis from the Public Works Department address you tonight since he's been working on this program.
Mayor Milton, are you on?
There we go. Mayor Milton, Middleton and council, thanks for having me. My name is David Janis. I work as a program coordinator in the Public Works Department. As written in the Sherwood Municipal Code, Section 12.08, the city of Sherwood assigns the sidewalk responsibility to the abutting property owners. In 2011, the city council approved the formation of the Sidewalk Repair Assistance Program. This assistance program is in no way intended to relieve the property owners of their responsibilities, but rather it is intended to assist property owners with the cost of repairing and replacing sidewalks. In brief, the program will assist a homeowner by scheduling and performing all of the work required to repair the sidewalk hazard, and the city will share the cost of the repair 50/50. In 2012, the Public Works Department completed a citywide inspection of all the sidewalks and identified approximately 1,700 sidewalk deficiencies. On August 9th of 2012, the Public Works invited 150 residents to option into the program or they can perform their own repairs in the allotted 60 days. Most residents in this first group either participated in the program or performed the repairs themselves. For those who neither participated in the program nor repaired the sidewalks themselves, the city repaired the sidewalks on their behalf in April of 2013. The homeowners were then issued an invoice in early May requesting payment in full at 100% of the total cost within the next 30 days. In accordance with Chapter 12.08.090 of the municipal code, these unpaid balances after 30 days may be assessed as a lien against a property. To date, we have three addresses where the property owners did not participate in the program and did not, have not yet compensated the city for the repairs that were completed on their behalf. These three addresses are 22778 Southwest Cochran Drive, 14928 Southwest Brickyard Drive, 22741 Southwest Martin Court. It is the recommendation of the staff to place a lien on the three properties identified in this ordinance to recoup the costs associated with the Sidewalk Repair Assistance Program. And as this is an ordinance, and we would have 30 days before we can proceed, we would extend to these homeowners the opportunity to pay the balance in full within these next 30 days and prevent the process of going forward with the lien. While it was not required, we did send out a door hanger to the homeowners to invite them to come here tonight and to offer their comments in this hearing for their own defense. I would like to open the door to Mayor Milton if you'd like to hear any of the comments from any of the homeowners that are here.
Well, we'll open a public hearing on this, correct?
Mr. Mayor, it is not a public hearing. It's an opportunity to comment from the three affected property owners.
All right.
To be clear, it's only those three that would be able to speak this evening.
All right.
All right, I'll yield for the moment.
Thank you.
And I'll come back for any questions.
Mr. Stewart?
Whoops. Broke it. All right. Okay, we're live. My name is Mike Stewart. I'm a resident at 22741 Southwest Martin Court. I've had some maintenance issues with my home, okay? And the tree issue, the street tree issue is the third one, okay? That's my third strike, and I'm not out. My first three days, when I bought the home in 1996, I spent three days rehanging the natural gas lines underneath the house because they were not to code. So I'm going to have taken a three-quarter inch natural gas line, put it through the sill plate, and bent it underneath the floor joist. Now bending gas line creates micro fissures in the pipe, and that's a safety issue. That's the way I bought the home, and I was inspected by City of Sherwood inspectors. Now, five years ago, I had a water leak, my main supply line underneath my garage floor. I spent $1,200 for a reroute, and we pulled that copper line out, and it was soldered at the joints. Code requires that those joints be braised, not soldered. Soldering is for above-ground only. Now, we come to the street tree. The city of Sherwood has an approved list of trees that they require the builders and the developers to plant. Now, two of those trees I have a problem with. One's a red maple, okay? And the other one is an ornamental plum. Now, I don't even have to talk a whole lot about an ornamental plum. It drops the fruit on the sidewalk. You get it on the bottom of your shoes, you crack it in your house, stain your carpet. It attracts insects, bird droppings. It doesn't belong on a street. Belongs in a fruit orchard or somebody's lawn. Now, a red maple, I've already contacted my attorney. He's been in communication with the city of Sherwood. I thought we had this issue resolved. Apparently, we don't, okay? Now, I'm going to quote my attorney. This is Mr. Paul M. Nelson, attorney at law. Okay, first, although we, you are correct in asserting that the city of Sherwood did not plant the red maple tree at issue, it was planted by a contractor. We selected that particular species from a list provided by the city. Thus, the city had direct role, role in controlling the type of tree planted. We believe the city failed to properly research the growth habits of this red maple species before including it on the approved list. Secondly, if the city had competently compiled its tree list, the red maple would have been excluded, and the current maintenance issue would have never arisen. It is inequitable to expect my clients, or for that matter, any other property owners to be responsible for the cure of a problem caused by the city's inadequate research into the growth habits of a particular species of tree, or for the negligence of the city in placing a red maple on its street tree planting list. That's where I'm coming from, okay? I didn't create the defect. As a property owner, I expect to be responsible for the normal maintenance and repair of a sidewalk over its service life, provided that it's been properly inspected and installed, okay? Now, I've supplied each of you with some photographs. Page one, that shows the lift in my sidewalk panel. The second one is after that panel's been removed, and you can see the encroachment of the root system underneath the panel. Page three, that's the main root. That's the one that did the damage, okay? Now, this got me pretty excited, so I took a little digital camera trip through my neighborhood, which is, I live in a cul-de-sac, and it's four blocks east, floor box west, north and south. Picture number four, okay? What you're looking at is a tree stump, and right next to it, to the right, is the base of a street lamp, okay? Now, the previous owner, that house owner lives directly across from me, okay? That tree was dead the day I moved in. He overpruned it because he knew if he let it grow, it would tip over that street lamp, okay? Picture number five, you're looking at a tree stump. Another neighbor, he was upset that he wasn't receiving the full illumination from the street lamp. That tree stump is within eight feet of that street lamp, so he was conscientious enough to cut down the tree. The fact is, is the building and maintenance, city building and maintenance people, when they drew up their plans, they didn't do a review, okay, of where they located the street lamps and where they were locating the street trees, okay? So we have instances like this, okay, where we don't have competent people doing the job, okay? And I'm a little fed up of shelling my money out of my pocket for somebody else's either negligence or incompetence. And that's the reason I haven't paid this and that I spent my money contacting my attorney. I expect competent city government, and I haven't got it yet.
Okay, thank you. Tim, you can't comment on this. It's only affected landholders on this certain issue. You can talk about it at council comments. All right.
So I'm available for any questions about the program or anything else.
I would like to direct a question to city attorneys or staff. This seems unusual, seems like an unusual ordinance, an unusual issue to be handled by ordinance. I don't think I've ever seen something like this be an ordinance. Do we not have, when we put the sidewalk laws in place only recently, did we not put remedy-type issues built in for staff to handle it? And would this normally be something that we write in ordinance that is targeted to affect a dispute with three citizens?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Grant, before we can impose a lien, it requires city council action. The city staff has administered the program all the way through to this point, but requires governing body approval by ordinance to impose a lien on the city lien docket. So that's the reason we're here tonight. And the reason an ordinance is required, as you might imagine, is that imposing a lien is a remedy that the city doesn't take lightly. And so the ordinance creates the appropriate level of formality and council approval that we can then take action to impose it on the lien docket. I think, Tom, you're looking...
Sure, I was just going to comment that the ordinance that requires this ordinance was put in place a long time ago. And we did create a sidewalk assistance program to try to help people who we knew were having problems meeting the original ordinance. But the ordinance that was put into place, I think it was in the 80s or 90s, basically outlined this process, and now we're at the very, very last step of what that ordinance requires. We didn't make changes to that ordinance. When we did the sidewalk assistance program, that was to try to take 150 affected property owners and make that down to, hopefully getting everybody to participate, but we've gone from 150 down to three in this case.
So Mr. Stewart's repair, the number David that you have there is $783, and is that half of the cost of the repair?
No, that is the total cost for all of the vendors to perform all the work to get the repair accomplished.
And what was the actual repair?
The repair was a removal of a concrete panel, the removal of a tree. The removal of the street tree required both an arborist report and a tree removal permit, and then the cost of the removal of the tree and the replacement of the concrete panel.
The removal of a tree, did we have to do that on any of the other sidewalk repairs we did?
Yes, in fact, there are many instances where a tree is removed because it's designated as the cause of the problem with the sidewalk. And so for those who engage in the program or opt into the program, all the costs to remove the tree are split in half with the city program. And yeah, there's several, several instances of trees removed over the past year.
So his total bill of 700 and some dollars is the full, full cost then, correct?
That is correct.
And then what was he billed?
He was billed the same amount, $783. That's not just the tree. Again, that is the tree, the concrete, and there might even have been an instance of an uplifted panel that could have been shaved down. Unfortunately, I don't have all the exact details in front of me, but, you know, those were small costs as well. Do you remember, Craig?
There was two shaves on the property. We waived one shave, Mayor. There was a tree removal, the permit, as he said. The deal here is, is when we offered the program, Mr. Stewart didn't sign up for the program. He went and received legal advice that contacted our attorney that started a process. And we went through the process that's laid out in our ordinance, the 60 days. We sent bills, didn't receive them, and that's why we're here today. This is the final, the final place that we have to go. It's not like, we allowed more time than we had, that we could have, and all the proper processes went through, and it's been reviewed by legal as well, and our legalist talked to his legal, and this is the final resting point for your decision.
And you're giving him 30 days to comply?
At this point, we have 30 days before we can process any lien to the county, and so we are offering during this period of waiting that if the homeowners want to rectify the balance, they are welcome to do so.
Can we revisit the fundamental idea and question that Mr. Stewart brought up? Because I'm sure it occurred in many other places, and a lot of us know the history about some of the not-so-favorable trees being planted, and we just recently have revised the tree list and some tree canopy stuff, and I think at some point we added language in the code to where we had, we actually took into account street light spacing entries. But could we hear a refresh on that concept? And I, getting to the core of, I think, where Mr. Stewart's problem is, is that the tree was planted per code, per requirements, the developer did what they were supposed to do, and now the homeowner has to deal with fixing the problem that was written in the code. And that had to, that had to occur in many places across the city, but can we just explain, revisit that? that and explain to us?
I can revisit. I wasn't here when that subdivision went in, so I can't answer everything, but I'm assuming when that subdivision went in, the developer for that subdivision probably submitted a set of plans to the city, and whoever was here at that time working in the engineering department, or whoever was reviewing that in the planning department, approved the set of plans. I can't talk about his water line and his gas line. It doesn't have anything kind of to do with us. We're more on the sidewalk. We do have issues out there with trees that were planted all through the city, and if you go into the code, the tree code spells out pretty much that the property owner is responsible for the trees as well as to maintain them, which we started a maintenance program on last year because we weren't getting, we wanted everything trimmed up proper canopy. The sidewalk says the same thing, that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house. I do know that the community development department went through a whole tree process here a year and a half ago, as well as cleaned up some code. But I can tell you, in our current code, the street trees is under the homeowners as well as the sidewalks, and we're just following the process.
And what options for solutions might the property owner have had, say, in the last 10 years while that tree was growing and shoving up the sidewalk? Could the homeowner have realized there was a problem, then just kind of cut the tree down without a permit? Or would they have got a fine and gotten in trouble? Could you explain maybe what their options are for a solution?
Well, in the past, any tree removal up until about two years ago went through the parks board. There's an ordinance on the process that we would go through that by getting an arborist submitting that. It was to me at that time to go through the parks board. Now, street trees, some of the stuff, it all goes through the planning department. At the beginning, that process is a staff decision now versus where it was two years ago, as well as the tree needs to be planted off from the tree list when it's been removed. So there is a removal process that could have happened.
I still see the examples around town that Mr. Stewart pointed out, where there's a street light right here, and there's a tree planted right here, and the trees are shading the light out to the point where at night the light's ineffective. And so if, currently, if a resident has that problem, if they come into the city and go through the process to get the permit, might that tree simply be removed and not replanted because the trees are already too dense?
There is a process that not all trees can be removed, but there is a process, if it's causing damage to utilities, we, staff can make that decision, yes, and we would have an arborist look at that.
Councilor Langer and Mayor, I'm sorry, if I can also interject, as part of the community development departments, planning departments' code cleanup, they also made some code amendments that would allow the removal of trees without replacement with that recognition. Now, you know, we obviously have heard a lot of issues and concerns about, well, if I replace it right where it's causing my water line to break, that's not going to really solve the problem in the long term. So the code does allow, there has to be some verification provided, but it does allow trees to be removed and not replaced as well if they're causing problems.
Do you have a motion?
Can I ask one more clarifying question?
Sure.
So of the 150 residents that were in this sort of first phase that we entered into the program, I'm sorry, David.
That's okay.
I'm Tennessee to look at Craig. Those people who signed up for the assistance program for a bill that was $800, what would they have paid?
They would have been issued a bill of $400.
And that would have been reimbursable, payable back through their utility bill, correct?
It's a separate bill than their utility bill. So payment or non-payment of the sidewalk program will not reflect on your utility services.
Okay.
But it's a payable amount available to be paid over 12 months.
12 months, okay.
And it's half of the total cost. So in your example, of the $800 on the original invoice, $400 would be to the responsibility of the homeowner.
And we would have taken care of all the repairs?
That's correct.
And the permitting and everything.
Exactly.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Just make sure that I understand you're right. In Mr. Stewart's case, the whole amount, $783, but had he signed up on the program, it would have been half of that?
That is correct.
And I heard you also in your testimony saying that you were going to offer 30 days for these three folks to come in, and if they come in, are they still going to get the half-off deal, or is it the full-meal deal?
At this point, it's the full-meal deal. The option to get into the program is within the first 45 days of the 60-day window to repair the sidewalk. And what this allows us to do is to work closely with our vendors and schedule our vendors, who are going to be going down that street, to hit everybody who's in the program at the same time. So it creates a less overhead for the vendors to do their work, which helps us get the costs low enough that makes it very agreeable to a lot of the residents.
So on these three properties, did the vendors come back at an inconvenient time and do them independently?
That is a great question. We scheduled these three repairs in at a time when our vendors were in another part of the city, not like a whole other part of the city, but working down different blocks. Because we, you know, took 150 in this area first, then we just chose another 100 over here. And so while those vendors were focusing on this area over here, they went back to get these remaining three. Well, and there were others that were in this category as well, so they collected all of them. The three that we have in question now are the ones that haven't paid that 100%. Is that clear? I mean, I can say it again in a better way if it's not.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's just a painful decision.
Yeah.
I just had a question. It's not possible to let them join the program now, correct?
It's not under the ordinance as it's written, correct? Yeah.
Call for motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 2013-006.
One second.
Ordinance 2013-006, assessing sidewalk construction costs on certain lots and parcels in the city and directing the city recorder to enter such assessments into the city's lien docket. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Langer?
Aye.
Counselor Butterfield?
Aye.
Counselor Colson is absent. Counselor Grant?
Aye.
Counsel President Henderson?
Aye.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Thank you.
We move on to...
...session this evening about Southwest Corridor Plan. You've also received an update from Metro Counselor Dirksen a few months ago as part of your regular business meeting and presentations. I'll be fairly brief. For the past two years, staff and former Mayor Mays and current Mayor Middleton have been working on the Southwest Corridor Plan. The purpose of the Southwest Corridor Plan was to create a framework intended to improve the land use and transportation conditions in the Southwest Corridor. We, throughout this process, identified existing conditions, opportunities, challenges, goals, worked with all of the affected jurisdictions, Portland, Tiger, Tewallaton, Sherwood, as well as jurisdictions that were sort of touching the Southwest Corridor area, Beaverton, Lake Oswego, Durham, King City, Washington County, Metro, and TriMet. So there's a lot of stakeholders at the table, and through this process, a plan was developed. The Southwest Corridor Plan identifies, some of the things that have been identified through the plan up to this stage is that high-capacity transit is not an alternative to be considered further in Sherwood at this stage of the implementation, but increased local transit service, particularly between Sherwood and Tewallaton, is an integral element of the plan. The resolution in front of you will formally endorse the work that has been developed to date, which will facilitate moving the project to the next step. And it also confirms the city's commitment to remain part of the process. One of the reasons why we believe that's important is that it allows us to benefit from funds leveraged with our jurisdictional partners to implement the corridor plan. We'd also have the ability to inform future decisions within the region and actively participate in addressing transportation and transit issues important to the local community. Obviously, from a financial standpoint, it will involve staff time. We anticipate two to four meetings a month throughout this process, as well as the mayor would be going to some meetings as well. We also anticipate that Metro will be asking the local jurisdictions to participate in some funding in the next budget cycle. We don't know what that is yet, and we certainly would be able to make decisions on how much we're willing to pitch in as we get further on into that process. And with that, I respectfully request that the council adopt the resolution 2013-047, endorsing the Southwest Corridor Plan and providing direction on the future participation in the implementation of the plan.
Well, I personally don't endorse the plan. I do, however, see the need for us to keep our pulse, our finger on the pulse. So, like I said, I'm kind of torn, so I'll wait to see what the rest of my council members have to say.
Any other council comments? Do you have a motion? Or did you have comments?
I'll have a comment. We've talked about this a number of three or four or five work sessions, and as Julia mentioned, there, you know, light rail is not an option for Sherwood. We don't think it would serve our needs. The one thing that I said that I would hope for, and granted, this is a long-term plan, is that whatever improvements we get improve not only, you know, residential traffic but commercial traffic. And so, you know, we've already been talking about Tewallaton Sherwood Road tonight, how many cars come down that road. So I think, being a part of the discussion, you know, we're at the end of the line of the corridor, am I correct? And so I don't necessarily want to be the last person to be offered a piece of the pie, so I think staying at the table is an important issue, and I don't think there's a single person in the room that wouldn't want, you know, improved transportation east-west, or a single person in the room that would turn away public transit east-west, which we currently don't have from our town east. And so that's what I'm hoping for. And we had a work session tonight where we talked about, you know, next steps, which will take some time. So, other than that, I'll make a motion. Anybody else?
Any other council comments?
I'll move we adopt resolution 2013-047.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
You oppose?
Nay.
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 Resolution 2013-048, calling for an election on and approving ballot title summary and explanatory statement for the annexation of 12 tax lots comprising 97.5 acres of land in the Brookman Road Plan area for the November 5, 2013 election. Brad?
Mayor Middleton, if we may, I need to read a public hearing.
Oh, go ahead.
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on resolution 2013-048, annexation of 97.5 acres in the Brookman area. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony on the above said item. The order of business the council will follow is to hear the staff report, receive public testimony, receive additional staff comments and then questions from the council. The hearing will then be closed. No further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed to the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. As this hearing will be recorded, please limit your testimony to four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Brad Kilby, Planning Manager. So what we have before you tonight is a request by 12 property owners in the Brookman area to annex their properties into the city of Sherwood. And the total acreage of that annexation request is about 97 and a half acres. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the difference between this request and the request that actually went on the ballot in 2011, followed up with some things that I hope to answer any questions that you might have. So if you remember correctly, the 2011 annexation request was a request to annex the entire Brookman area that was brought into the city, I think in 2002, with UGB expansion, and that would have been 258 acres of land. It required approval by both the city voters and the voters within the affected area. Within the affected area, that 258 acres, I think the election went down 78% voting no, and that was 38 properties against it and 10 properties for it. And within the city, it failed with, at a margin of 51% to 48%. Tonight's request would be different because it was brought in under a triple-majority method, meaning that the majority of the owners that own the majority of the property with the majority of the assessed value have requested to be brought into the city and annexed into the city. It only requires a vote of the city folks as opposed to the city and the affected area because essentially the affected area or the area that would be affected by this annexation, they've all signed on to come into the city. The hatched area down at the bottom shows the 12 properties that have been, that have requested and signed on to petition to come in. Again, taking the actual city limits, if you choose to put this onto the ballot, the city limits would extend to the west side of Brookman Road, so it wouldn't be on our, I mean, it wouldn't be the east side. We'd extend it all the way over to the west side to accommodate future improvements if development was to come in under that, after the properties. 2009, the Brookman Concept Plan was approved by council, which essentially adopted zoning for the area. And the properties that are affected by this particular annexation, if you look right here, it goes to where Lad Road curves east and comes down at the angle where Middleton Road comes in. That property is all zoned for residential development. It is bisected by a large natural resource area, and so I would expect that upon annexation that it would be zoned medium-density residential low and medium-density residential high, and any future development within that area would need to accommodate sewer, water access that would have to be extended and upgraded from the existing city services, as well as protection of that resource in compliance with our development ordinance and the standards of clean water services. Brookman Road would serve as a primary access for future development in this area. There are secondary roads that include Middleton, Lad Road, and Old Highway 99, but essentially the primary access into this area would probably come from either Middleton or Brookman Road. Utilities are available, and in fact, if I can direct your attention, at the very far right, as I'm looking at it, far right of your screen, down on where Lad Road curves over and starts going down Brookman, the bottom hatched parcel, just above that is where the sewer would come in. And you can't see it, and I don't have a pointer, but there's a flag portion that's a solid black line along the city limits, and that piece of property is actually where the sewer would be expected to come in. I can come up there and point to it.
Or tell me where to point. Oh, you got one.
So this property right here, this is a flag lot, and this sewer would come in over here. So this property did request to be brought in. This property did not, but the property where that flag portion did.
I'm sorry, the property that white asked to be brought in?
Ma'am, it's the black part above it. So there's a flag pole portion right here that runs, I'm not very steady.
That's an understatement.
I would have gone into surgery. I would have been a surgeon if I could have. But so sewer and water would have to be brought in by... But so their sewer and water would have to be brought in by future development if it was to be brought in, and it would have to be upgraded. And that would be one of the areas that they would have to bring it in from. Again, it would be property that would be primarily zoned for residential development, 97 and a half acres. It's served by Towleton Valley Fire and Rescue, and it would continue to be served by Towleton Valley Fire and Rescue. Police service is currently served by Washington County through the enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, and that would go away with this resolution and ultimate approval by the voters, and it would be picked up by the Sherwood Police Department. So I guess the big question on taxes, it didn't change much from the 2011 election, which you heard back then. So the assessed, or the tax rate is such that people out there would be paying, on average, $429 per $100,000 of assessed value over what they pay today. If they paid like the taxes that were, the full tax on their property, a lot of those properties out there are in some type of tax deferral, whether it be forest or farmland or some other type. They do not lose that deferral if they're annexed into the city. They lose that deferral upon development. So when they decide to develop the property, that's when they lose the deferral. So the difference in their taxes would be about $429 for every $100,000 of value that the property is assessed at. In 2011, the city council entertained, and at that time, it was a city-initiated request, they entertained an offer of phasing in the city taxes over a period of 10 years. That is something that the legislature does allow. The applicant did not request it in the application, but you might hear them request it tonight. This is a listing of the properties, the parcel sizes. So the parcel sizes really vary in size from less than a half an acre all the way up to 15 acres, 15.82 acres. But the overall assessed value of the properties that are actually coming in is about $2,154,880. And all 12 of the properties have a represented signature asking to be brought into the city. So tonight, staff recommends that the council approve the annexation request by adopting a resolution that calls for the election, approves a ballot title, summary, and explanatory statement. That has to happen tonight in order to get on to the November 5 ballot. If you decide not to take action on this request tonight or want to consider it later, then it would probably not go on until the March 5, 2014 election. This annexation request is on the exact same timeline that your special committee was for the ordinances that we were talking about over the last couple of months. And council may amend the resolution to include additional properties. However, that's not recommended by staff. They haven't been brought in. There is, let me go back to this map. Typically, we don't like to see islands that are left out. So there's this property, these two little properties, or three properties, that are going to be surrounded, if this, if this annexation is successful, be surrounded by city property. But I believe that the applicant, and he can speak to this a little more, has gone out and talked to all these property owners, and these folks specifically did not want to have any interest in coming into the city. I will say that there's a gentleman on the end here who is interested in coming in, and we talked to the city attorney about that. Unfortunately, it's a procedural issue. He would not have met the notice requirements to get on to this ballot, and to delay this would mean that you, in order to bring him in, would negate the request of these 12 other property owners and push it out to a potential March 5, 2014 election. So with that, I'll close my report and ask if you have any questions of staff.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing now.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I might add that, and hopefully you received this from Sylvia today, there were two pieces of testimony that came in today that I want to enter into the record. One is an email from Bridget Story, sent today at 12:29, who lives on Redfern. She had concerns about the extension of Redfern, and she would like to see all of these properties brought in, if it was going to be brought in at all. There, within, if you look at the ordinance that I've proposed, we maintain the language that does not extend Redfern, so it would take care of that issue, but it does not take care of her request to bring in all the properties. And then we also received a letter from Chris and Mirta Meyer, who requested that this, or who indicate that they don't believe that this annexation is timely. They believe that the 2009 Concept Plan is outdated and needs to be updated before we consider annexation of this area.
Thank you. The first person is Stephanie Garrison. Stephanie Garrison.
I'm just really curious. I've got a couple of questions. You might be able to answer it. So you're telling me that all the little X's here mean that these property owners actually signed something that said, yes, I want to be annexed into it? Was it through a realtor by chance?
No, it's a petition, it's a private property petition. I believe that they were sued by a good.
My concern is, is that I happen to know at least one of the property owners that did not sign anything and that is not interested to be annexed. And if I know of one, that's a personal friend of mine, how many more X's up there are you or whoever made this little ass lying to us about?
They signed, they signed, they signed on. They signed their name.
Okay, just a minute here. Go ahead.
Well, I guess just a little bit of a process check in here. First off, this is a land use hearing, but we have typically tried to run these similar to a land use process that we do. So typically, what we do is we allow the applicant of the proposal to come up and make some opening remarks. And we usually give them a period of time, given the late time tonight was just maybe like 10 minutes or something like that, to make a presentation, then allow the rest of the public to come up and to make comments through their public comment period, and allow the applicant to reserve time to rebut those comments at the end. I think that might add benefit to this process because then they can, they can have some of these questions answered by the applicant. Staff doesn't necessarily answer all those questions because some of those are the applicant's water to carry, so to speak. So it might be better just to maybe invite the applicant up to maybe answer some of these questions so we don't have conversations going back and forth between staff and members.
Correct.
I would concur with that, Mr. Mayor, and also request that if folks come up to testify and they have questions, they direct them through you and not directly to the staff.
Then I'll make it, I'll make it quick. I know where I'm running late. I, as a Sherwood landowner, would like to see evidence, written evidence and the form that these people signed to, that said that they wanted to be annexed in. I'm finding it highly doubtful. I am just a little concerned about the high-density growth that is going to be in the area and not having good roadage. Brookman Road is a very, I don't know if any of you have driven it down it, it's, there's no shoulder on it, it's a hilly road, there's hardly any dividing around it, people go 50, 55 miles an hour down it. It's just a really dangerous road. And if you guys are talking about development-wise, which eventually it might get annexed in, but if you're talking development-wise, I want you to keep that in mind and maybe drive out on the road and sit in somebody's driveway. Because this, these are not, this is not an easy road to get out of. When we drive out on Brookman, we get tagged nearly every day driving out there. So I guess that's my whole thing. I'd like to see evidence that people signed up for this. If I could, I can give you my contact number and just for the council, when you guys are thinking of adopting a plan for this area, to really keep in mind how, what a crappy road Brookman is really for pull-in and pull-out. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant here?
Thank you. For the record, my name's Chris Goodell, G-O-O-D-E-L-L, with AKS Engineering. Our address is 13910 Southwest Galbraith Drive, Suite 100, Sherwood, Oregon 97140. We prepared the application and submitted it for the property owners that are included. I guess that, things went a little bit out of order. Typically, you know, the applicant goes first, but now we're responding to comments. City staff can talk about this as well, but the requirement for the triple majority annexation is that we get a majority of the property owners and a majority of the registered voters in the affected property. And we have well beyond that. We have 90 percent of the, 89 percent of the property owners and 90 percent of the registered voters of the affected area that is hatched in there. So, and one of the, I think the property that, I'm guessing, that's being discussed here is under split ownership. I think it's a third ownership, and we have two out of the, maybe it's six owners, I believe, and we have two out of the six owners. It's owned one-third. So, I mean, I'll be explaining it that well for that one property, but one of the parties signed the application, or signed the petitions. So, that issue aside, the application satisfies the annexation criteria as far as the triple majority. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you have regarding the application itself.
Counselor Grant?
So could you explain, I think I know the answer, but explain the, what improvements might come on to Brookman Road at, by the time all of this property got developed? If, you know, whenever that is.
I think maybe staff could answer that, but better than myself. But there's, the, the Concept Plan included a laundry list of improvements at intersections and frontage improvements for the properties on Brookman Road itself. But, you know, the expectation is Brookman's a county road, and it would be improved to county standards with curb gutter, sidewalks. I think it's a collector street, which is a three-lane section.
Okay. Thanks. I have to bring one thing up here. We're going past 9:30. We'll make this our last order of business tonight, if that, then we'll go to the urban redevelopment, because that should be real quick. Is everybody okay with that? All right.
So, so Mayor, if we follow our standard process, we would have other members come up from the, from the audience. Chris has taken about two and a half minutes of time, so he would normally have an opportunity to, not to comment on, on what other people said, as well as in you, to be able to dialogue with him about questions that may have gotten raised at that point, so.
That'll be fine.
So after other testimony?
Yeah. Neil Shannon?
Neil Shannon, 23997 Southwest Redfern Drive. It's unusual sometimes when I've been referred to as a citizen activist, that you can take your activities all the way back to a starting point. And I take a look at October 10, 2007, which was a first of a Brookman Road Concept Plan public meetings that I had an opportunity to attend. I suspect, besides Julia here in the room, I have probably attended more public hearings, more public meetings, more who-knows-what for Brookman Road. So I'm very familiar with the program. I am in opposition to this annexation. I do believe that the city of Sherwood would be better served to take a look at annexing the entire section of properties as a lump sum, rather than to take it piecemeal. I'm concerned about leaving islands that are not part of the city, that would continue to be parts of Washington County, rather than the city of Sherwood. I know that there were a lot of problems with that along Towleton Sherwood Road at times in the past. I am very aware of the election two years ago. I am not surprised that it failed at the time. I personally did not feel that the city of Sherwood was supporting the program very diligently. I'm, as far as the city not adopting it, there was a council charter change also proposed at the same, at that same election. So there was a lot of negativity towards the city of Sherwood at that time, so I'm not surprised that the annex failed. As far as the annexation failing from the Brookman Road residents, I talked to a number of them, and quite honestly, the reason that it failed at that time was because of the economy. No one there who lived there saw any opportunity of selling or developing their properties, and they saw no reason to join the city of Sherwood, even with the tenure grace that you guys were offering at the time for city taxes and city services and everything else. I think that that may be reversed now, and I think that this proposal is an indication of that reversal. Another concern that I have here is I note on the display of the properties here that the bottom left-hand, or excuse me, bottom right-hand corner, I'd like to double-check that that is a, a property that's being proposed for this annexation. I have taken a look at it. I've got some of the plot, plats here. I believe that that's been labeled as Property 105, which is not listed as one of the tax IDs that are on the table. And I see that the owners, at least this was probably three years ago, I don't know if it had sold, but the owners at that time were listed as John and Dennis Hag, or Denise Hag, and I didn't see them on the petitioner list either. So I'm a little concerned to make sure that that, that is accurate. But as I say, I am in opposition to this annexation. I think that the city of Sherwood would be better served to take a look at trying to bring the entire section of properties in. Oh, and one last comment. I noticed that Brad talked about the sewer line coming down the little flagpole. I'm surprised because the city just last year did a major sewer line improvement coming down Cedar Creek, parallel to Redfern. And they've stubbed out right there at the, at the stub end of Redfern Drive with a major sewer line that they put in just a year ago. Thank you.
Susan Claus?
Susan Claus, 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. I have a few questions. One is, before, when the Concept Plan was contemplated, all of the annexed properties that were proposed in that whole Concept Plan were supposed to be responsible for the infrastructure, on whatever prorated basis, share, whatever. What is the mechanism if, if it's piecemealed in? Are you obligating the people who have already said they don't want to be annexed in? How do those prorated shares go? And are we still dedicated to the idea that this group of properties, this concept, that they have to pay their own way for the infrastructure? And I ask that not only on behalf of the citizens, but I especially ask it on behalf of the people contemplating the annexation. Nobody wants to be presented with an astronomical bill that they didn't understand, that they were responsible for the infrastructure that would allow them to come into the town, including, I mean, Brookman Road is not part of the city. You know, how are they going to improve that? What are we going to do there? Until we have clarity where everybody understands their obligation, so the citizens are voting on, you know, who's responsible for the infrastructure, the annexation people understand, and the people who aren't being annexed in also understand. If there's a way that we as a city obligate them as a future, their property value is going down tremendously. If, if there's some way that we are obligating them to this whole idea and this whole plan, everybody needs to be aware of that. And, and it has, it should be within the notification of all of these people in this district, so everyone's on the same page, and nobody gets surprised by a bill and an infrastructure. I'm also wanting to confirm that even though there, there are percentages, that are high percentages of people that agree, the registered voters and the property owners, that it does take at least a 51 percent vote of the city residents, and is that 50 percent, 51 percent of the residents that vote on that particular time? Or what does that 51 percent entail? And, and does that stop everything in its tracks? Or it, like one of the other problems we had, we had either-or language where it said, and maybe it was just a Scribner's error, whatever. error, whatever. But, we've always been dedicated to the fact, in the city of Sherwood, that the citizens have that vote, you know, and it's a majority. It's not an either-or. So, if we had 49% or less with the citizens, but these guys agreed to it because they agreed to it, can that override? It shouldn't be that way. I want to make sure it's not that way. And it would, it's also incumbent on us, as if we are preparing the ballot title, that we have clear language, that we don't use double negatives, so people aren't voting, when they think they're voting no for something, they're actually voting yes. Please make the language clear on the ballot, and any kind of writing that the city does on behalf of that, that's in their, in the ballot language, make it clear. Let the voters know, because a lot of those people are only going to engage themselves right about as the time they're going to vote. There's another percentage that will know behind that. The other thing I want to say is, the staff has been committed at the metro level to have high density coming in this area, whether it's Brookman or that other side of 99W. If it is true that we're MDRH to MDRL, there should be some kind of stipulation or some kind of notice to the citizens. If you're going to try to jam a bunch of apartments down in the south end of town, we need to know, and that's appropriate, and don't do a bait-and-switch. Please provide that kind of zoning, whatever's contemplated, and not let there be a bait-and-switch afterwards, where then they come in on another basis, and all of a sudden, we've got 101 apartments.
Thank you, Susan.
Appropriate services. Thanks.
Denise Hag?
I'm Denise Hag, 16655 Southwest Brookman Road. And basically, I just did want to say, we are that property on the far right-hand side, and that was a mistake. We didn't sign a petition or anything. Okay, so, that's all. We're off. We're not interested in coming into the city, so that's it.
Thank you. Mike Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor Middleton, council members. Basically, I just have a couple of questions, I think, more along with the process. Is there ever a situation that could arise where if this did not come to a ballot, that the council would actually be able to vote it into annexation or not?
If you're looking at me, I didn't quite understand the question. I'm sorry. Were you asking?
Right now, the proposal is to put this to a vote to the citizens of Sherwood.
Correct.
My question is, would there ever be, let's say it's denied, to put it to, to put it on the ballot either now or in 2014, is there ever a situation that would arise where the council could actually make that decision to annex it or not?
Under the, I understand, under the, Mr. Mayor, the city charter does require voter approval for annexations. And there are also state law provisions that dictate who votes. In this case, because of the level of consent, it's Sherwood voters. It would take a charter change to allow the city council to once again decide annexations.
Okay, thank you. Second question is, my understanding is that the original assessment of how the property should be zoned and its impact to the community was done back in 2009, and to the point of the letter that was proposed, what is the standard timeframe for the city to review these plans to where they're still valid? Is there a set timeframe where a study may expire and be required by ordinance to be reviewed again?
I can answer that. There is no set timeline. This, when this was adopted, it was implemented via our comprehensive plan, so you have comprehensive plan designations in place, and it would not expire. That doesn't mean that you can't reevaluate in the future or at any time, the zoning of an area and, you know, update a plan if you so chose, but there's no expiration to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. I'd like to propose that this be postponed in being put on the ballot for this year, just for a couple of reasons. One being that from 2009 to current date does, to me, seem like a fairly large span of time, especially given the developments that are going on on Twalton Sherwood, with Walmart, with the light at the Regal Cinema Theaters. I think that needs to be reassessed. Also, as a member, a citizen of this city, I would like to know specifically what lots are going to be zoned high density, where apartment buildings are going to be going in. I'd like to have that information, so I can make a well-informed decision, and I don't think that information is being present, presented currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Voorhees?
Tim Voorhees, P.O. Box 908, Sherwood, Oregon. First of all, I want to thank you all for putting in your time and effort here. This is a land use issue, is it not?
This is a, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. This is the council's determination of whether to send this to the ballot. If it's approved by the voters, then the later actions taken to zone it and so forth would be land use decisions.
But, isn't this land use? Because you're voting to bring it in and stuff, and shouldn't notifications been put out to the property owners?
Good question. It is, it's, this decision, again, is really whether, because we have a voter approval requirement in the charter, the first step is for the council to send the question to the voters. Then, if the voters approve it, then it will come back to the city to take those land use actions, and at that point, notice will be provided.
Okay. The problem that I see with this, Mr. Mayor, is, I know that it isn't you, but after a decision is made by the city, or any public comment has been made, or anything like that, the decisions have already been made, the plot plans have already been that. So, we're, as citizens, are always behind the eight ball, trying to get caught up. We lose money trying to play with the city, fight with the city, and everything else. Our tax dollars are paying them to fight with us. My property at Steel Tech is probably 750 feet away. If I wouldn't have came down here, read this, I wouldn't have known anything about this annex until it's too late. Okay. So, what about all the other property owners? What about all those people that have kids in Middleton, Archer Glen? You bring in high density. Where are those kids going to go to school? Where are the kids going to go to school with the 102-unit insta slump that you're putting in? What about the 40 extra apartments that are going in above the commercial that I've heard about, over there at the Canary site? I mean, right now, why bring something in if you don't have the infrastructure to support it? It just doesn't make any sense to it, to bring it in. It doesn't. I mean, tax dollars are tax dollars, but it doesn't make sense. And one property up there is wrong? Was it really a sleight of hand? I don't know. I don't trust the election process. I don't trust the staff on getting the proper amount of signatures for initiatives. A lot of stuff has gone wrong here. We need to grab the bull by the horns and make it right. And you, as council members, you're the boss over the city. I've heard old city managers say that, sit back in their chair and say, "No, it's what you want us to do. We do what the council says." So, anyway, that's it. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Mr. Goodall, you want to come back up?
Mr. Mayor, I think I'd like to add a little bit of clarification about what notice was given, just to be clear.
Go ahead.
This is clearly not a quasi-judicial proceeding, which is the kind of proceeding that the witness indicated would require individual property owner notice. So, the city processes these initially as legislative matters because of the size of the proposal. And the notice that was given was given in accordance with legislative procedures. Is that correct, Julia?
Yeah, and I'll let Brad speak to this if I'm not correct, but it's processed in accordance with the metro requirements and the state law for annexations, which are different than a traditional land use action.
So, who was notified?
I'll let Brad speak to that, if that is something that council would like answered.
Mr. Goodall, would you like to come up, please? We can't, don't talk from the audience, please. Would you please come up? Maybe you can answer some of the questions that were brought up.
Sure, I'd probably share some of that with Mr. Kilby. I believe city staff posted the sign on the site, so. I guess I would say that our legal description that was included in the application didn't include that one corner property, and it wasn't included. So, I think it's, Brad can speak to what happened there. So, that was, it's not included, and it wasn't going to be annexed. With respect to piecemeal, this is a property owner-initiated annexation. The last go-round, I think, was the city initiated, so it's not, it would be almost impossible to gather 100% of the property owners as a, you know, private property-initiated annexation. It's just, it's just different. So, you know, what you had is a couple property owners spearheading the process and got a large group of owners together who wanted to annex to the city. So, and that's, aside from that one property in the corner there, that's what you see before you, is it's owner-initiated. So, it's not possible to get every single person, and it's not required. With respect, I heard a lot about high density. Anything here is designated as, it's all medium density, and that's all a function of the concept plan. So, all the, all the zones have been spelled out for a couple of years now, in terms of, you know, it's medium-density residential. So, you know, it's, you know, 5,000 to 7,000 square foot lots. That's, I don't know if that's considered high-density residential, but it's not per the city zoning ordinance. In terms of traffic, the, and the infrastructure and annexation in and of itself has no impact on traffic. There's not, you're not going to see a single subdivision as a result of the annexation. You're not going to see, you know, new homes built as a result of the annexation, or people hooking up to sanitary sewer connections and as a result of the annexation. That's something that would become evident after his own change application was done and after subdivision applications were approved. In that case, you'd have neighborhood meetings, further hearings, a full public process for all those types of activities. But, the annexation itself, you wouldn't see any of those things. I think Ms. Berry spoke about the notice itself, so unless, Brad may have something to say about that. I guess it's like the emphasis is the property owner-initiated annexation, people that want to join the city, and that's the impetus behind the, the application. So, if you have more questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm, I'm right now closing the public hearing and bringing it back to council. Council have some questions?
Was there more that Brad needed to fill in?
He can answer questions.
Sure.
The notice, I believe, was one of the issues.
Thank you. Thank you. A couple of things I'll respond to. I apologize, that is a mapping error on Tax Lot 105, but if you notice, oops. If you notice, at the end here, all of the property owners that did sign it, 105 is not included in there, so it was simply a mapping error for the vicinity map. That property is not included in your ordinance to be brought in. It is what the actual legal description that was submitted by the applicant, along with those properties that had signed the application. And you can see this tax lot, which is a 9.92 acre tax lot, assessed value of $63,900, about halfway down, where it says, "Sign petition." Yes, one of three. So, that's what Chris was talking about. One of the landowners out of the three, one-third of the third had signed it. That is enough for a majority, when you're talking about the whole area. So, again, it is the majority of the property owners with the majority of the area and a majority of the assessed value. So, that's what constitutes a triple majority. So, the majority of these people want to come in. With regards to the notice, so state law requires that everybody within 100 feet of the properties that are proposing to come in be notified. That notice was sent out. It also required that we post notice in the Tiger Times. We did that in two consecutive post, or weeks, even leading up to this hearing. And then also, we posted the site in two locations. I got it on Middleton and Brookman. It's a fairly large piece of property. Those were the two most logical places to post it. Like, I posted it where there's an intersection of the road coming from the west onto Brookman. I posted it there, so I thought it would get the most traffic. And then at Middleton, right at the tracks, the one place where this property touched. And so, that's, those are the two locations that I posted the sign. We did contact the school district about whether or not they would have issues with these properties coming in, and they were involved in the concept planning in the 2009 concept plan, and they did not express any concerns with capacity at the schools with these properties coming in. Can some of these properties be developed with multifamily structures? The bright yellow ones could potentially be developed with multifamily residential. The tan ones are medium-density residential low, and in the medium-density residential low, multifamily dwellings are not a permitted use. So, it's a small portion of that site. If they were to be developed multifamily, they could potentially be, I'm not sure, the acreages individually of that area, or what densities they could get. But, with regard to Brookman Road, any future development out there? Brookman would come in with this annexation into the city. It would still be a county facility, but it would be in at the city to allow city utilities to go down Brookman, and it would have to be improved to the county arterial standard, which at this point is three, a three-lane section, similar to what you might see Daybreak doing out on Elwert. That's the property that's just south of Edie Road on Elwert. They'll be doing road improvements to Elwert Road, and they'll be building the same type of section here. I think there are larger issues definitely with Brookman, but annexation is not necessarily the time to address those. This is how cities grow. You annex property in, and as it gets developed, then you, and you already have a concept planned. You know then where your utilities are coming from. You know what your streets are going to be. You know what your zoning's going to be. And now, at the point that this comes in, then there's a discussion of how the properties are developed, and what improvements are required to serve those specific properties.
Do you have any more council questions?
I'm sorry. I just had one other thing to say. There was a question about the plan expiration, and I would say that this is a 2009 adopted plan, and this was brought in in 2002 to accommodate a projected 20-year land supply for the city under the Urban Growth Boundary Amendment. So, you know, we took 10 years before we actually, or I'm sorry, not 10 years, seven years before we actually planned it, and then five years. It's still with, well within its 20-year plan horizon, so.
Council comments? Do I have a motion?
Oh, go ahead.
Brad, probably more comments, just to clarify and make sure that I understood the testimony that I heard tonight. And so, first, just to confirm, this is all private property, and all the private property owners, with the exception of... owners, with the exception of two, that happen to be on a property where there's three owners. But everybody except for those two particular folks are requesting it and signed for it.
That's correct. And the petitions and the signatures were certified by Washington County.
Okay.
I guess, the, the actual right-of-way of Brookman Road that we required them to bring in as part of that is public. It's not private, so.
Okay.
Extending beyond the private property to the other side of the right-of-way for Brookman Road, that's public.
Gotcha. Okay. And the schools were involved in the decision, so they don't have any capacity issues?
They were involved in the 2009 concept plan. It did not raise any issues with capacity. And then I have contacted, or attempted to contact Heather on three different occasions and got her administrative assistant. And she said that they just didn't have any comment. And Heather was out on vacation one of the times I tried to get her and then she just didn't return calls.
And the 2009 plan you're referring to was a 20-year plan?
I'm not, I'm not sure what the, the time horizon is, but an urban growth boundary expansion is intended to accommodate a 20-year growth supply. And so in 2002, when they made that, they said, you know, over the 20-year, next 20 years, we expect this area to develop out at urban densities. And then the city came in seven years later and went through the concept planning process to actually designate and comp-plan that area. So they said, okay, within the next 20 years, if this area develops out, this is how it's going to develop.
And how much other similarly zoned properly in Sherwood is available for residential? So the majority of this is medium density residential low. Is there much other property of that zoning type sitting around the city waiting to be turned into a subdivision?
I don't know the exact numbers. There's probably some properties up along Elbert that would be eligible MDRL. And then the majority of other properties that you might see developed are infill projects that are small, you know, under 10 lots if they were to be developed.
This whole Brookman corridor area is basically the next big growth spot for Sherwood. Is that correct?
It's, it's the, it's the area that has been designated for growth since 2002. There are other areas that you might recall were brought into the urban reserve area. Those are areas that might be considered and are currently under consideration under the appeal that I guess is at the state level as to whether or not they could be covered as urban reserves. So potentially, those areas could come into the urban growth boundary and be developed prior to this. It just kind of depends on the timing.
Gotcha. And so last question or statement here, but us, if we approve it and let it go to the ballot tonight, that's, obviously, we're not the last step, but it still has to pass a majority vote of the citizens in Sherwood.
Yeah, it's up to all of the citizens of Sherwood. It, it's not up to the people within the area anymore. I mean, so the people that are not part of this request don't get to vote on this request because they're outside of the city and they haven't, their property is not being proposed to be annexed.
Thanks.
So there were some questions about doing this piecemeal. Is there a problem with bringing the property owners in that, with the respect of the Sherwood citizens' approval, that want to be in and not including the properties that don't want to be in?
Not specifically related to what they've assembled here, our properties, where it is conducive to serve with public utilities extended outside of the city. Certainly, I think under ideal circumstances, you would want the entire area to come in because that's where it makes the most sense to be able to work with all the other property owners to bring in services. This is a large group of people and for lack of a better word, it's like herding goats when you're trying to assemble a bunch of property owners that have the same idea. And we know from experience that not everybody out in Brookman Road agrees that their property should be annexed. So I, I would highly suspect that you, unless, again, you went with a city-initiated annexation to annex the entire area, it would have to pass muster again to actually come in as much more than what you see today. I think what you see, and the old adverb in all of city planning is, is that development follows pipe and pavement. So I suspect that once these properties adjacent out here have services available, then they'll be interested and might, might join their resources and try and annex into the city. And, and let me just be clear, nobody in this area has necessarily, they're not required to develop their property once they're annexed. That's still a property owner's decision, that individual property owner's decision. And when they do decide to develop their property, they'll be subject to our standards as opposed to the existing standards under Washington County's laws.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one response. Brad, I agree with everything Brad said. I would just say from a legal standpoint, there's no limitation other than that the boundary be reasonable. And given that public services and facilities are those that have been considered with these, I'm pretty certain that that test would be met. So that's what the legal requirement is.
And I'll just add, our city engineer isn't here, I'm sure he would chip in. We've obviously studied this area very, for a long time, since 2009, through the concept plan and everything else. And then, and to be honest with you, the proposal is actually fairly logical when you're talking about being able to serve it with utilities and everything. So if you were going to stage a, an annexation proposal, which makes sense in this area, this is the most likely way that we would do it if the city were to propose it. But obviously, this is something that the private people came up with as well. We would tell you if we didn't think it was readily serviceable because the last thing we want to do is create issues that we're going to have to live with for a long time and you're going to have to live with a long time because people can't logically develop their property. But this, this particular configuration of properties does make a lot of sense to city staff and to the engineering department.
I will make a comment. My vote tonight is going to be to send this to the voters and I'm just saying that right up front.
Before you vote, Mr. Mayor, I had one question for Brad that you didn't answer. You, you indicated that the crosshatching was a mapping error and that the legal description that was submitted does not include the erroneously cross-hatched parcel.
Correct.
I just want to be clear, the acreage calculations and everything else is done based on the correct area so that we have a correct ballot title in front of the council.
It is. It's based on 97 and a half acres and 12 parcels that were actually included on this spreadsheet at the end of this, so.
That's good. Thank you. Just wanted to confirm that the ballot title you have is accurate.
And I agree with Councilman Butterfield that these people brought it to us. It's nothing, we're actually out there trying to take their land, so. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we pass Resolution 2013-048.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
We want to see if we can put the URA.
We'll do the URA thing for Charlie's deal real quick.
Maybe, unless you want to just do URA.